I have another scratch here. Here, is that mine? Oh, your mic needs to be on.
Thank you. Okay, I'm now going to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners meeting for May 3rd, 2022. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones if you're home. So we will proceed with public hearings, starting with ordinances. We will start with P 54.
Item P 54 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 23rd, 2022.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Ed Zodion. I'm a planner with Long Range. The matter before you is a proposed amendment to the Land Development Code, Section 902. The proposed amendments were presented to the Horizontal Roundtable and Interested Parties meeting, excuse me, on March 16th, and on April 7th, the LPA voted unanimously to find the proposed ordinance consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval of the ordinance to this board. Just by way of background for a moment, the current process is this, with an initial application, a site plan is filed with all the horizontal features. Before the slab is poured, a form board survey is provided and reviewed. Now, a form board survey does provide the elevations and setback issues. And then prior to the CO, a grading affidavit, an approved grading plan, and an as-built survey is provided. The proposed process will retain those first two steps, and then prior to the CO, a grading affidavit and approved grading plan will also be approved, as well as an elevation certificate. And the as-built will only be required if the site sits within a FEMA-declared flood zone. The first amendment is in Section K 1. It removes the engineer of record to inspect a lot upon completion and complete the as-built certification prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The second amendment, it's, I'm sorry, is Section K 4C. It has a certificate of completion and affidavit of lot grading and finished floor elevation compliance be provided. For buildings and structures in flood hazard areas, an elevation certificate as well as an as-built survey demonstrating conformance to the approved storm-water management plan. It removes the as-built survey and lot grading requirement from all other aspects. Today, we ask that you accept public comment on this matter. No action is required by the board. This is the first of two meetings. The second is scheduled for July 12th, here in Dade City. May I answer any questions? We have someone here from UCS to answer your questions as well.
Board members, any questions? This was long overdue. Did anyone want to speak on this one? Jennifer is going to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Motsinger, and I represent the Tampa Bay Builders Association. I just wanted to say thank you very much to all of you and to your staff for working with us to get this accomplished, and we are 110% in support of this. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that requires no action, correct? So we'll move on to P 55.
Item P 55 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 16th, 2022.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Item P 55 is PDD 220241. Today is the adoption hearing on this item, so we ask that you accept public comment and adopt by roll-call vote. I'll read the ordinance title. It's an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 800, Natural and Cultural Resource Protection, Section 802, Tree Preservation and Replacement, Chapter 900, Development Standards, Section 905, Greeds-Based Requirements and Standards, subsection 905.2, Landscaping and Buffering, subsection 905.3, Plantings in the Right-of-Way of Residential Subdivisions, Providing for Applicability Repealer, Providing for Severability Inclusions in the Land Development Code, and an Effective Date. A full presentation on this item was done on April 19th, '22, and this comes to you with a recommendation from the LPA that you find that the LPA found it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners, and that went to the LPA on April 7th.
So, Board members, I was not here at the last meeting, I was at the ULI conference, and so I did have a few things I wanted to bring up, and one I forgot to talk to you about, but I'll bring up the one I talked to you about first. And I see Patrick's behind you. So, an example of Board members is a development called the Preserve, and when they came in for their commercial retail, it came in as one big piece, and can you speak to it in your language on the problem and how we're going to fix it?
Yeah, sure, I can do that. So we had a development that came in.
For the record, you are?
Yeah, sorry. For the record, Patrick Dutter, Planning and Development Department. Thank you. So we had a project come in for development. It was a commercial development, and that development came in as one entire piece, more or less, with a whole bunch of different buildings around it. We have a requirement in our code that's for lot perimeter landscaping, so you landscape around the lots. So all of this development was more or less considered one lot. So the internal landscaping between the buildings and really the internal sites wasn't really required to have any perimeter landscaping. The only landscaping that would have been required was vehicle use area landscaping. So I believe the request is for us to take a look at potentially having landscaping median planting requirements installed, where that would be prevented in the future.
Well, I don't know what the right term is, and if you want to pull up on Google Earth, the Preserve, which is Suncoast and 54, we can show where the problem is. I actually have photographs, but I'm not going to send them up to you now. I think if we just go to Google Earth, you can see. So in discussions with staff, a road internal to a development is not, doesn't have the same landscape requirements along the edge. And so, for example, in Google Earth, in the Preserve, is someone there? There's a Greenwise Publix, have you guys been in there to the Preserve? What's in my, you know, 54 and the Suncoast, that's one of our premier intersections?
Yeah.
So between the Greenwise Publix and I think it's a CVS, and there's a Pulte, there's no landscaping. The perimeter roads have nothing, and the interior roads, I'm sorry, and it looks really not premier. So I want to make sure that we're catching those kind of situations in our landscape code. And so I'm not sure that what you said was an, are we going to call those islands?
So, we, like you said, we don't really have a definition for what that area is called. Looking briefly at some other areas, they call them landscape medians.
Landscape medians?
Which, I was looking at Hartford's code, they called them landscape medians, that area between the drive aisle and the parking stalls. Landscape islands are the ones that jut out into the parking.
Yeah.
So they were calling them landscape medians. We could, you know, tweak it a little bit to make it's, you know, account for what you're expecting to happen here, for sure.
Okay, so, do you see the, this is for my Board members, do you see the Preserve Marketplace Boulevard?
Yep.
Nothing, no landscaping. That's really sad. And so, and it's going to happen when they add the other parcels, it's so they're, so, and for some reason, there's no, you know, there's no perimeter landscaping around the Publix, so somehow, I think there's a flaw in our plan, and I'm hoping that'll catch it, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just going back, so again, making the assumption here that in our code, it basically says the frontage has to have the landscaping?
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, not, okay, even though, in reality, like Chairwoman stated, you have access on the side of this, and it can be almost be considered frontage in a way.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah. So just something that, when the code was ready, was missed?
Essentially, yes. So there are three big categories when it comes to landscaping. One is your lot perimeter landscaping, which is around the lot itself, which is, like you said, the frontages or the side properties. Then you have your building perimeter landscaping, which is right up next to the building, exactly how it sounds. And then we have the vehicle use area landscaping. So if you're in a vehicle use area, you're required to have 10% of your vehicle use area landscaped. So that's really the only thing. So because this is basically one giant vehicle use area, they're really only required to meet that 10% vehicle use area rule.
I'm not sure why we would call that a one-vehicle-use area. Seems like the vehicle use area should just, it should be for each pad, not for one whole development.
Sure.
I can't think of any other place, I'm going to be paying more attention to it now, but when I drive into, say, Mitchell Ranch Plaza, or, I can't think of any other place where people didn't just go ahead and put landscaping, because that's, it calls for it. But obviously, if we don't require it, they're not going to put it in, so.
Yes.
It's disappointing, but, so I think we've got that fixed. The other question I have for you is, and I brought this up on a conversation with industry, when a development comes in and they do a tree survey before they, I'm not sure if this will be in the same area, so if it's not, we'll fix it somewhere else.
Okay.
If they come in and they do a tree survey, and we, I guess we are messing with that here, who goes back to see if those trees were actually planted and if they're still there, after time goes by?
So, good question. I believe that when the tree surveys are done, they'll hire professionals to go out there and do that tree survey, and then I believe that is adopted, that tree survey is more or less, well, approved with the set of plans that we approve, showing which areas are going to be removing trees and which ones aren't going to be removing trees. They will then develop according to that plan. And then we have our engineering inspections team will go up and follow up with plans that have been approved to ensure that they are being constructed accordingly.
Yeah, and from what I'm hearing, that doesn't really happen, that we don't assign someone to go, and I'm not talking about necessarily the trees that go, you know, we have a tree for every house, but we also have requirements that they put trees in open spaces, and I'm actually digging into the Key Vista plans, that was done a long time ago.
Right.
But I've always wondered how Key Vista can be there with no trees, when that place was heavily wooded when I came here. I don't know who else, if anyone ever drove out to the Holiday Rec Center, Jack, you've been here a while, you drove through that tunnel of oak trees, the most beautiful road to get, and now there's no trees in that development. So I just want to make sure that we have a mechanism where we have staff that goes back and makes sure that the trees are there, and, so.
Sure, and so that is what our engineering, so Key Vista, I know, is a pretty old subdivision. I don't know what regulations were in place at that time, when it came to tree removal and replacement and that sort of thing.
Same thing, tree survey, and they had to put X amount of trees back in.
Sure.
It's just, I think it's, it's just something that I think where we've dropped the ball, just like we're not holding commercial buildings to
Sure.
keep up their landscaping, we haven't been. I'm not sure we went and verified that what was needed got done.
Okay.
And is still there.
So in some instances, so there's a board-imposed rule when it comes to removing trees, that, you know, let's say you have a heavily dense parcel, a very large parcel with a lot of trees on it, there's a cap on how many trees you actually have to replace, and how much you have to pay into our tree mitigation fund.
Right.
So that's probably what happens in some instances, too, where trees are removed and that type of thing.
Yeah, so.
Chairman?
Yes.
Madam Chair, sorry.
Either way.
You just said there's a max, so if they cut down 200 trees, they only have to, I don't know what the max is, so if they cut down 200 trees, they would only have to do a max of 100 trees of replanting?
There's a threshold, more or less, yes. I mean, it's much larger.
And it depends on the size of the tree.
It's, yeah.
Five inches or larger in circum, in diameter?
It's five, I think it might be 10, but yeah. And, but there is a cap, and again, the cap we're talking about, it's much larger areas that we're talking about.
If you can get me that number, that'd be wonderful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I helped write that a long time ago. Yes.
With the, with the plan, it says shade trees. Does that include palm trees?
So to use a palm tree as a shade tree, you have to use a grouping of three palms together to count as a shade tree. But you can't do that for every single shade tree, or else some sites would be straight palm trees. So I think it's, we allow up to 30% of the required shade trees to be palm trees in those groupings.
Do you think it's going to prohibit or keep people from putting in palm trees, or not?
So we obviously allow the flexibility of doing alternative standards applications, so when we have projects that have a specific, for instance, a lot of projects near the beach, right, they'll want to put in those palm trees. We understand that our code requires shade trees, but sometimes a field near the beaches, palm trees are better, right? So they'll apply for an alternative standard, and we'll allow them to plant palm trees instead of all those shade trees.
So like three tall palm trees instead of just one shade tree?
Correct.
And they look funny when it's just one, unless it's a big.
And there are some species of palm trees that we allow to be planted by themselves, where we're terming them as grand palms, more or less, and these are, you know, some of those massive species that you see.
Those marquias.
Yeah, exactly. So those can count as a shade tree, but if you're using some of the smaller palm trees, they have to be grouped in threes.
When you say smaller, do you mean from installation or from growth?
What I mean, I mean the thinner ones, the palm trees that you used to see in driving down the road.
I mean, they get some of the bush palms that probably go up a little bit, footage, maybe 10, 15 feet or something, but there's other, other ones around that takes a while for them to grow, but they grow pretty tall. I just would hate to, you may get some situations where a palm tree's going to fit well, not affect the sidewalk next to it, you put a shade tree in there, and now you got a situation where you're affecting sidewalks.
Yeah, that's why we allow palm trees. And I also think that a palm tree may be better for, especially in the frontage area for car dealers. And we've talked about that in our meeting with Larry Morgan and Scott Fink, that sometime, they've been putting oak trees, and that's not maybe the best thing to have over a bunch of cars, but they really like the idea of being able to use the palm trees.
So having them in clusters of three, if you have like three of them all together, compared to if they were stretched out along the way, it may look better with them stretched out along the way. So quantity-wise, I don't mind even increasing the quantity, but just having them to be clustered together, I don't think is the ultimate.
Depends on the look, but they can always ask for that.
Sure, yeah, there's, that's one of the main reasons we have the alternative standard is for those instances where we want that flexibility.
I tell you, alternative standards are just like a variance, it's, we try to get away from variances, so why bring them through that, just give them, I'd rather just give them the option to stretch out more of the palm trees than to have them clustered, if they weren't clustered.
I think they can, I think they can, right? You just have to, it's, the quantity is greater.
Without doing an alternative standard?
So currently, we, the code will require them to be grouped in
Oh, okay.
three.
So I'd rather have to group it.
Madam Chair, if it's supposed to be a shade tree, and then if it's on the corner, then it would be, make sense to have a group of three on the corner of a lot, or in the middle of a median, or things like that, because you want to provide shade. But I do like the fact of separating the palm trees if it's along the front edge of the road.
Open to the board?
Depends on the palm tree. You wouldn't cluster big-trunked palm trees in a group of three.
Yeah.
But you might the little ones, yeah.
There are quite a lot of factors that, you know, different type of tree, different location, you know, there's a lot of that stuff. But currently, the rule is, you know, yes, if you're going to replacing a shade tree, it needs to be a grouping of three palms.
So what I don't want to see is like up on US 19, North and Hudson, they've got palm trees in the median for part of their beautification, but they're really small, and they don't look good to me, the way they're set up. It would have been better if they were bigger, but work with DOT was a different issue. But I think if you have a larger tree, it can stand alone by itself, I don't mind if you look at putting more of them in there, but just able to stagger them, I think, would be better than just having one, and how, and how far would they be apart, normally a shade tree, 20, 30 feet?
If it's along a front edge, it'll be 30 feet apart.
30 feet, so I mean, I don't even mind if we go like every 10 feet with a palm tree.
Well, they would, they would have to put in three times the palm trees for every shade tree, whether they're
I'm okay with that, but they need to stretch them out.
You're talking about that look, like colonial and thrive and
So, okay, yeah, so again, we just define it as grouping of three, and we interpret it to be three really close together, so I would think we could make that
Can we add the verbiage?
I personally like it the way it is.
Within 10 feet apart from each other, if it's a group of three?
I'm okay with just even 10 feet apart. They want to separate, let them decide how they want to set, let them set their look.
So keep them together, but let them figure out the design, is that?
Well, I'm inclined to leave it as it is. You guys?
I think we spent enough time on this.
I know, that's why I need to hear from you. Yeah, because
Yeah, move for approval.
Second. Do we have?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
A roll call?
A roll call, okay, sorry.
I thought we did.
Except for the change.
Wait a second, you, you took Patrick, you didn't take the public.
Oh, I guess we'll let them.
I have no one signed up for P 55.
Does anyone want to add it to our palm tree discussion?
I'll say move for approval again.
Second.
Can we hear?
I want to clarify if, with the changes for the interior landscaping.
I would agree to that, so moved.
Roll call vote.
Can we hear?
Oh, did you want to say something?
Oh, no, I was going to get a clarification, whether it's with the changes that you're proposing regarding the
Yes, that is now a motion.
Thank you.
I'm just like
We have a second.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Seeing no one from the development community stepping up?
Aye. Okay, District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Let me see where we are, because I do need to pull something up to the front for Mr. Two.
On P 56.
Okay, all right, P 56.
Item P 56 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 9th, 2022.
P 56 is PDD 220261, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for text amendments to Chapter 7, Transportation Elements, Table 7-28, Corridor Preservation, repealing Table 7-2B, map amendments to the Highway Vision Plan and Functional Class, map 7-36, and the Transportation Corridor Preservation Map, map 7-35, and additional text amendments for consistency. This item, we're asking today that, this is adoption, the adoption hearing for this one, that you accept public comment and adopt by roll-call vote. This went to first reading on March 3rd, 2022, and it went to the local planning agency on November 4th, '21, who found it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval to the board.
Okay, sorry, I was checking out something. All right, so any questions?
Anyone signed up?
No one signed up on item P 56.
Okay, to the board.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to P 56?
Or online.
Seeing no one, more
There's no one online.
Second.
And no one is online for the record.
Is this also roll call?
Roll call vote.
Okay, all right.
We get a motion in a second.
It was Commissioner Mariano, motion in a second.
Thank you. District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye, thank you. Okay, let me check on something for Mr. Two. He has, you want to leave it?
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, so then we are on 57.
Halfway through this next one, don't say.
57.
I'm sorry, item P 57 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January 19th, 2022.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Elizabeth Blair, Pasco County Attorney's Office. This is the first public hearing on an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners Establishing a Temporary Moratorium, 180 Days, on the Submission and Acceptance of Applications for Building Permits, Site Plans, Special Exception Uses, Conditional Uses, Rezonings, and Comprehensive Plan Amendments Within the Moratorium Areas Around Airports in Pasco County, Providing for Authority Legislative Findings of Fact, Definitions, Moratorium Areas, Temporary Moratorium Imposed, Duration of Temporary Moratorium, and Severability." It's previously directed by the Board of County Commissioners that there would be a moratorium on the development of land around the airports in Pasco County. An initial draft of that ordinance was circulated and brought to our Airport Zoning Commission as well as our Planning Commission, and on March 3rd, the LPA recommended approval of the initial moratorium that had multiple off-ramps for development to continue in Pasco County during the time of the moratorium, while allowing that development to meet certain state standards and federal standards. Since that time, there was some opposition that arose to that moratorium and led to two different moratorium drafts, the moratorium being reduced to you, or brought to you. Following meetings of the Planning Development Department, Representatives of Development Community drafted a moratorium ordinance. However, in the opinion of the County Attorney's Office, the Development Community Moratorium Ordinance does not prohibit any development around airports that's not already prohibited by state or federal law or county policy, and effectively would not be a moratorium at all. So since that time, and after consultation with each of you, a redraft of moratorium ordinance was prepared by the County Attorney's Office, and the moratorium areas of that ordinance were strictly reduced. That is the ordinance that's in your packet with the attachments, Exhibit A. The moratorium areas proposed by that ordinance are much smaller, they're oval in size, they're called noise-abatement areas, also known as airport zoning protection areas.
I'm sorry, item P 57 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on January 19th, 2022.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners, Elizabeth Blair, Pasco County Attorney's Office. Uh, this is the, uh, first public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance by Pasco County Board of County Commissioners establishing a temporary moratorium, 180 days, on the submission and acceptance of applications for building permits, site plans, special exception uses, conditional uses, rezonings, and comprehensive plan amendments within the moratorium areas around airports in Pasco County, providing for authority legislative findings of fact, definitions, moratorium areas, temporary moratorium imposed, duration of temporary moratorium, and severability. But it's previously directed by the Board of County Commissioners that there would be a moratorium on the development of land around the airports in Pasco County. An initial draft of that ordinance was circulated and brought to our, our Airport Zoning Commission as well as our Planning Commission, and on March 3rd, the LPA recommended approval of the initial moratorium that had multiple off-ramps for development to continue in Pasco County during the time of the moratorium, while allowing that development to, uh, meet certain state standards and federal standards. Since that time, there was some opposition that arose to that moratorium and led to a, two different moratorium drafts of the moratorium being reduced to you or brought to you. Um, following meetings of the planning and development department, Representatives of Development Community drafted a moratorium ordinance. However, in the opinion of the County Attorney's Office, the Development Community Moratorium Ordinance does not prohibit any development around airports that's not already prohibited by state or, or federal law or county policy. And effectively would not be a moratorium at all. So since that time and after consultation with each of you, a draft, a redraft of moratorium ordinance was prepared by the County Attorney's Office, and the moratorium areas of that ordinance were strictly reduced. That is the ordinance that's in your packet with the attachments, exhibit A. The moratorium areas proposed by that ordinance, um, are much smaller, they're oval in size, they're called, uh, noise abatement areas, also known as airport zoning protection areas. They're measured based upon a, a formula in Florida statute where the oval is half the size of the runway all the way around. Also within that moratorium ordinance, we recognized that there was some need for additional off-ramps or exceptions, so we did create four proposed exceptions. Uh, we wanted to go ahead and continue to exempt the primary target industries that would keep Zephyr Hills economic development projects moving forward. We also would allow for billing permit applications that had been determined to meet FAA standards, but not creating a hazard to air navigation to go forward. That specifically was geared to protect the Campbell property, which already has vested rights to go forward. We also made an exception for the project on Ridge Road because it had a conceptual plan approved by all of you that does not allow for any buildings to be located in the moratorium area. And we also, of course, would allow for the local airports to continue to pull building permits and move forward because they're subject to their own standards and rules. On April 18, 2002, the Airport Zoning Commission reviewed the County Attorney's Office proposed moratorium ordinance and recommended that that moratorium be the one adopted by this board. Since that time, it has been suggested that land uses within the proposed moratorium areas further be defined to prohibit residential and educational facilities. In doing so, there is no longer a concern to allow for economic development projects in Zephyr Hills since they would be taken out of any potential moratorium. So I did make that change to that document. It's in front of you labeled as P 57, and if you'll look on page three of that document, I've included language that provides for, in section five, that the moratorium area would be then limited within those oval shaped areas still, but now only prohibiting residential and educational facilities. I've also included definition of educational facilities and residential in section three of that proposed ordinance. So for today, what's before you is to hold the first public, uh, public hearing, accept public comment, and to continue the final public hearing, which was to be for today, to May 17th, 2022. Or we've also provided an alternative board action for you, which is to cancel the final public hearing for this moratorium ordinance and decline to adopt any moratorium ordinance for any areas around airports in Pasco County, and instead direct staff in the County Attorney's Office to only regulate areas around airports through the future airport zoning regulations ordinance. Any questions for me at this time?
Madam Chair.
See, that's first.
All right, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Just to confirm, cause the biggest concern that I, I have heard was one, we will be using one half the runway for the airport moratorium zone.
Correct, correct.
But when the noise abatement study comes in, then we would be adopting the noise study for the updated zone.
Correct. Um, the ordinance before you does allow for in section three, the definition of noise abatement areas to be that measurement in Florida statutes, as you pointed out. Also in section five, they have a statement in the ordinance that allows for the noise abatement areas to be modified should the county's consultants' noise studies be completed during the time of this moratorium and are adopted by the board. So once those are complete, we can bring those right to you for adoption.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair. I know you gotta take public comments still, but these are just some things I want to take into consideration a little bit. Um, again, how large is the oval?
It is dependent upon the size of the runway because it's specific to each runway. So for example, on Pilot Country, it is 1,800, 1,800 feet approximately. So that's half the length of their runway, and then when you end up turning it into the oval, like is in your packet.
Yeah.
And each runway is a little bit different, and Zephyr Hills has two runways, so you see the two ovals there, and those are larger than the other one.
Okay, so, um, let's go over a couple. So let's look at Zephyr Hills. How large is that oval?
I don't, let's see here. Theirs is for runway five and 23, it's 2,500, and for runway one and 19, it's 2,347.
So that number again, uh, I know the answer is just, we're gonna do it for the people at home and the, and the people in the audience. 2,500 from the runway or the circumference of the oval is 2,500 feet?
It's from the runway.
So radius all the way around the runway is one half the distance of the runway.
So let's go to Tampa North Aeropark. That's a shorter runway.
Mm-hmm, I think this is.
People can nod their heads, I think that's shorter than Pilot Country.
Yes, it is.
So that runway goes across, that, that oval goes across 75.
Correct.
Right, so I'm gonna use this as an example, um, cause I know that area very well. Planes fly over my house, does not bother me whatsoever. We think it's kind of cool, actually. You know, the kids love it if they see the planes coming over and stuff. And I, I know we want to do something obviously to protect the roadways. We want to make sure the, it's not impeded, the flight pattern's unimpeded, the, uh, approach and, and it's not impeded, um, takeoff's unimpeded, the whole nine yards. Um, but when it comes to noise, this is where I guess I have a little bit of an issue. And I say that because if you move into a neighborhood, you should be familiar there's an airport next to it, or it's in with a certain amount of distance. And to come back later and say, well, this noise is bothering me, well, that's on you. You made, you made that decision yourself. I use where I live because planes fly over at a Tampa North Aeropark. Everybody knows that area, when you go down 75, you think they're gonna hit your car sometimes. Kinda neat, right? Um, it's kinda cool, you know, it's like the low plane, planes, you see, you know? Do you not remember when you were younger, did you ever go to TIA and like park on the side and watch the planes fly over and land on your, on the load of your car? We used to do that.
There's a beach you can hang out in St. Martin where they.
Yeah, that, the.
You can almost touch it.
Yes. So when we talk about having a noise abatement, say a noise abatement area, I think about TIA, for example. People are building multimillion dollar homes, which would be in a noise abatement area in South Tampa and close to the airport. You have multimillion dollar condos, poems, Davis, well, Davis, that's a great example. I totally forgot about that airport.
I took a picture of it.
Yeah, that's another example of an airport. So point being is that, um, you know, who, who are we protecting with the noise here? You know, we're, we're, you're protecting people that should have known when they bought a house or build a house, there's an airport by it. That doesn't really, uh, concern me too much.
And that's not what the purpose of the regulation is.
Well, but we talk about that though, so I want to make sure, you know, that we are having that discussion. That's a big part of this discussion, as we can see what's on the screen. So that's one of my huge concerns when it comes down to this. Again, we want to make sure people are able to fly in and out safely and get back and forth to their airport, but when it comes to the noise factor.
Double pain.
When, taking into consideration the airport protection zone, there are four elements, and the four elements that have to be addressed are height, compatibility based on the noise study, or based on noise, landfill, and then runway protection zone. And those are the four elements, so the sound is gonna, the noise is gonna be addressed. And there was an email that someone was thanking the Board of County Commissioners for implementing an airport protection zone because they didn't want to hear the noise. So, and I explained that's not really what the airport protection zone is. And I believe there was an airport, and if someone can correct me if I'm wrong, in clear water or surrounding areas, that they did have to start limiting their hours of operation due to the noise constraints. So therefore, we do want to protect the airports to make sure there is not an issue where the citizens are up in arms and having to be able to have a stay and then shut down the airport.
Well, Madam Chair, does, as a response.
I'm doing myself.
Yeah, yeah.
I can call myself.
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
And then me.
Yeah, yeah, you can go ahead, but I, I just, yeah.
Oh, no, I think, I think.
After hollering.
We'll go to Commissioner Oakley.
Can we go to Hidden Lake Airport? And on Hidden Lake, people in that area that live there know there's airport, they live there, their homes are there, so they're there because of the noise and they know the noise is there. So I don't know if this, does this cross the property we've, we've already approved a zoning and all on a, on a multifamily, I call it a resort, at Tango, Tangowood and Ridge Road.
Correct, and that's why there's an exception created for them.
Is it in the circle?
If the portion of the property that's in the circle is their dog park, a gazebo, a detention pond, but no structures, that's why I had that exception for it.
Here's my concern about it. Does that stop them, cause they've got their approval, but they haven't pulled a permit yet? Does, if we put this in place for six months, does that stop them from receiving their permit?
No.
Because I've heard otherwise.
No.
And does it keep them from moving forward? Because when they went forward with this project, they answered all the questions about FAA and, and everything, cause that was one of the big issues around that area, and the noise, and, and the area around there for line of flight of planes and all. They went through all that. If this prohibits them from going forward and pulling their permit, then it stops them six months, and then they have to come back and prove again through the FAA and all, which we all voted for.
They're exception number four. They're exception number four on page four, section five. They're, 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 they're not covered by this moratorium at all. They have an exception to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we going down the line still?
No.
I wasn't done before.
You're jumping.
Okay, we'll go back to Commissioner Moore.
I had a list. The list is right here. Um, yeah, just going to Commissioner Oakley's statement, so if we look at, he, he named a certain potential developer.
There could be others.
Yeah.
Well, you wouldn't have been able to build the college.
Yeah, right, that's true. When I, so I go back, I go back into the, um, multifamily moratorium that just ended. Big fan, right? We all know that. At the same time, at the same time, one of the things I said when we did that was if somebody has their entitlements, they have an application in, it can't affect them, right? This board can say no for whatever reason, if it, you know, if it goes against the top plane and things like that, but is there any type of future developments around any of these airports which would have to do anything differently or do something additional to what they've, the process they've already gone through to get their entitlements? Do they have to go back and do a noise abatement study? Would they have to do anything else whatsoever if this were into, if this were to come into effect after the moratorium if the actual policy were being?
During the course of the moratorium, they couldn't do anything if they don't meet an exception.
Say that one more time.
During the course of the moratorium itself, they can't do anything unless they meet one of the exceptions.
Okay.
So.
So, okay, so, so somebody that already has gone through the approvals of this board and received entitlements, they would not be allowed to move forward with a project even though this board gave them permission to do something.
They could pull a building permit under number two.
Uh-huh.
So if that's what you're asking, if they have to, they have to prove up though under the FAA that they're not a hazard to air navigation. But if you already had your site plan, you could pull a building permit. So to my knowledge, there aren't any projects stuck in the middle from what I've been told, but I think that maybe planning and development folks may be able to answer more specific questions if you have them about a particular project. Um, but bearing that, when the course of the actual, when, when the regulations are actually adopted, they would be forced to go through something in addition to what we already have now in our code if you were asking that.
They would have to, say that one more time?
Once the regulations are actually adopted at the end of the moratorium.
Right.
There will be additional criteria that some developments would have to go through if, based upon where they're located, you know, in a part 77 surface, within some obstruction area, so yes, there will be new things that people will have to do in the future, even if they already have their rezoning, for example, because the rules will kick in at site plan or, or building permit time.
Yeah, so like, that's one of my issues, right? Again, we've told somebody that stood in front of us and spent their money and went through the process that they can move forward with something, and now we're potentially, you know, and it's true, we're potentially changing, not, potentially changing the rules, right? I mean, in essence, right? That's, that'd be the fact, is now you're required to do more than you were previously told in a may have been a year or two long process that you went through, got your approvals, you know? Hooray, we're ready to move forward, and, and now, oh, we have to do more. So now it's more, now it also costs more, right? Cause they're gonna have to have land use attorneys and whoever's doing the studies and everything to go through a, potentially another process.
Right.
So that, you know, I mean, that, that kind of concerns me. So I go back to the, again, the multifamily one that we did before, which obviously was a spoiler, but I said, there's no way anyhow we can make them, people already have it, they have it, done. Don't like it, but that's not fair if we didn't, if we took that away from you. So therein lies my issues.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
This was brought up in 2016, and the county was supposed to adopt an airport, an APZ by June of 2017, and we still don't have one set up.
Right, so.
Oh, we're, we're, yeah, yeah. There's a lot of counties and cities that, unfortunately, or fortunately, whatever you want to say, don't have them either.
Well, I think we should have what we're supposed to have.
We, we say.
I'm not saying don't do something, just, please tweak it.
We don't have what was required in 2016, we don't have anything. So when the rules changed in 2016 became effective, other jurisdictions already had rules in place they had to tweak, we, we've had nothing, so we're disadvantaged that way.
And I've spoken to the stakeholders, and the ones, I know the biggest concern recently was they were concerned with one half the runway distance radius around the runway. They would like to see the noise, the noise study be utilized. One of the main concerns, I think, was we cannot move forward with the APZ until we receive the noise study back. But if we can move forward with the moratorium, so we can stop worrying about the moratorium and move our focus to the APZ, so we can finalize the APZ, as soon as the APZ is completed, then the moratorium will be over.
Well, okay, so I have a question on that. I heard that study maybe have come in last night?
What we got was the map data points, for lack of a better word, I don't know what they used to call it. So, um, but we don't have the actual noise contour studies. Basically, the consultant took the data provided to her, and she put it into the computer program, and now she's asking for verification that what she did was correct, and then it will actually then after that point in time, create the noise contour studies. You actually can look down a map and see where those lines are.
So that's evident.
That's not done yet, that's.
But it's.
But it's supposed to happen this month.
This month, okay.
And we can adopt those.
And in section 5A, it does say as soon as the noise study comes in, we'll be utilizing the noise study and not half of the runway.
All right, so I, I'm, I'm with the thoughts of Commissioner Moore that if you buy a house near an airport, you can expect that there's gonna be planes landing at the airport. Um, and, but in talking with Elizabeth, you know, I think we had told that one neighborhood will, you have to put in your HOA documents that, or something that they sign that they're moving in near an airport. Um, from what, from what we gather, there is, that doesn't mean they can't sue. So I'm just wondering if, thinking of how agriculture is protected in the state of Florida, if we don't need to ask our legislators to protect airports? Because if you move, if you move with the sound, if you move near an airport, you need to expect the sound. If you move next to my blueberry farm, you're gonna hear the gun go off scaring the birds and I, and so.
Highways, you live, you live next to a highway, close to a highway.
Yeah, you're gonna hear the cars.
Constantly.
Yeah, so.
Cars and wrecks.
But, you know, people are sue happy and I just think we all, we need to protect our airports.
Madam Chair, do we have public comment on this?
Uh, we do, and we have, um, we have, uh.
Thank you.
Barbara Willhite, thanks, I'm sure there may be more questions. Barbara Willhite has a presentation, there may be others signed up?
There's five signed up.
Um, okay, what else?
There might be more, but there's five signed up.
Okay. Barbara, why don't you do your presentation and we'll hear.
And just for the record, no one is on WebEx.
Okay. Okay, Barbara has requested five minutes to speak for a group.
Barbara Willhite, 6327, permit, excuse me, Grand Boulevard, 34652. I could probably speak about this for an hour, I'm actually tired of speaking about it. I did, one thing that was characterized by Attorney Blair was that the members of the development community drafted an ordinance, that's not true. Mr. Petos asked for some reasons to be made to the draft ordinance, and I was the scrivener, so I was a scrivener. I did not put forth any draft ordinance, so just want to clear that up. So in conversations regarding this topic, which I've learned a lot about, unfortunately, I've been asked over and over and over, what is, what are you actually required to do? And so I just want to go over that briefly, because you haven't been presented that yet, and I didn't see it in the agenda memo anywhere, so I don't know if you actually know what you're required to do, so then you can distinguish when you're being asked to do something more than you're required to do. So this is your, your comp plan, you have a comp plan that specifically spells out what you are required to do, what you wanted to do, what you said you were gonna do, and what you adopted to do, based upon Florida statutes. And you just did that in December. So this talks about the, ensuring the airport protection and exactly what you're gonna do. There's two components of airport zoning regulations, airport protection, zoning regulations, airport protection, that's height, but you're protecting the airport. Nothing more important to protecting an airport than height, so you don't have obstructions that airplanes run into. And then there's a second component of airport zoning regulations under Florida law. It's airport land use compatibility. And that's where you have landfills, dress landfills because of wildlife attractants, noise contours, land use compatibility, and runway protection zones. Those are the four components of what you're required to do by Florida statutes. Height is intuitive, that's one of the things you have to, to deal with. Landfills intuitive, wildlife, sanitary landfills. I'm not even sure you can cite a new sanitary landfill in Pasco because of your resource recovery center, so I'm not sure that's actually an issue in Pasco, but it is a statutory requirement. Runway protection zones intuitively, approach and, and departure, those need to be protected. And that's actually, if there's something that, that you say, is there an actually emergency? Is there something that we need to do now? Runway protection zone, if somebody comes, is a permitted use and comes in and pulls a permit, they could pull a permit in the runway protection zone, because the runway protection zones of at least Hidden Lake and, and Tampa North Airport are privately owned, they're not owned by the airport. So if there's one place that you actually, somebody could come in and do something detrimental to an airport, that's it. And so I, that's the reason why I think Mr. Petos can talk for himself, but when he asked me to be the scrivener to bring forward an ordinance that he was gonna recommend to you, he's like, I want to make sure the runway protection zone's in that moratorium area. And there was clear consensus on that, by the way, everybody gets that. So here's the other component, establish the noise contours and prohibit incompatible uses. Your comp plan says you shall amend your land development code to require noise studies for public use airports, and you've now, by policy, asked that that also include Hidden Lake, to establish noise contours and address incompatible uses as set forth in 14 CFR Part 150 Appendix A. So that's what you're about to do, and, and I didn't know anything came in last night, because I've been kinda watching, and I don't know about the description of, I'd like to hear staff say what their description of what came in, because they're the ones, I think, that are monitoring the scope of what actually came in last night. But it seemed to me, from the emails that I read, that the, the studies are imminent. This is what, 14 CFR Part 150 Appendix A, this is a federal regulation, and they've gone through, because they are the FAA, and tried to go through and, and give recommendations on what's compatible, what's presumed to be compatible and presumed to be incompatible. And so what's highlighted there is the 65 DNL. And that, what that shows you is that it's presumed within the 65 DNL, above 65, that that's where residential's incompatible. I just want to show you briefly, if you'll let me give a little more time here, I can show you some more things that I think will be helpful to your understanding. For Zephyr Hills, when I attend the Airport Zoning Commission hearings, they don't know they have noise contours, which kinda makes you wonder where some of this information is coming from and where some of this decision making is coming from, as far as what's being recommended to you. But Zephyr Hills does have noise contours. These are their noise contours. This blue line here is the 65 DNL. And they have it both with, in this study, they were studying their expansion plans. They have their current and also proposed. And these are what they're, and you can see that those are, that 65 DNL line, where residential and educational use is inconsistent, is on their property.
That's the, um, the three minutes.
No, it's time. I'll keep, if you give me that time, I'll keep, keep going. So I want you to just see some of these things that, that have been put together. When you look at Zephyr Hills, what this shows you is what the actual 65 DNL line is, based upon the actual noise contours that were done for Zephyr Hills versus the proposed, the moratorium area that's being proposed to you. These big lines over here, which are generally about a half mile around these airports, are where the moratorium's being proposed. This is the actual 65 DNL line, where residential land uses are presumed to be incompatible. This one, you don't need to wait for anything, this noise contour's already been done. But Zephyr Hills doesn't know it, at least from the representative that's at zoning commission hearings. This is the noise contour for St. Pete Clearwater International Airport. That green line is their noise contour. Here, and I'm, I know Doug Saunders is here from CNS, and he put these together, so he's gonna speak to you and, and answer any of your questions about these. But again, comparing the area that's being proposed to you versus the assumption of if you used the noise contour from St. Pete Clearwater Airport, which has 10,000 flights a day, versus, and that's Hidden Lake, versus Hidden Lake that has 27.
Aren't those different comp plans?
Excuse me, annual, annual at, where this, this line is created for, where the purple line is, is St. Pete Clearwater. They have, there are 361 flights a day, and including Coast Guard C-130s. If you use their noise contours in relationship to, because you don't have your own yet, which you'll have soon, but if you use a very, a larger noise contour based upon a very busy airport with very noisy aircraft, if you use their noise contour, that's the purple line, but you're being asked to do a moratorium all the way out here. So I'm showing you how important those noise studies are, are for you making your decisions and treating property owners fairly, and not bringing in properties that shouldn't be brought in, that aren't subject to noise generation at the level where the federal FAA is saying that, that noise is incompatible residential. Same thing for pilot country, you can see if we use the purple is if you use the flights that go on and the noise contours that's created at Tampa, excuse me, at St. Pete Clearwater, and then what's being proposed out here. The statute, this is the statute, and this is where that half a mile, excuse me, half a distance of runway all the way around comes from. If you look at C, it talks about where there hasn't been a noise study. And then it talks about where it has been a noise study on C and where there hasn't been a noise study on D. So you have noise studies underway, so you should be following C, which is to follow the noise study and then follow the 14 CFR Part 150 Appendix A, which I showed you, to determine what's incompatible within those noise studies. Contours as a result of the noise study. What's also interesting, if you read this, this statutory provision, is that it doesn't just apply to any airports, this noise and these noise studies. It actually applies to airport authorities and governing bodies operating public use airports. But that being said, the county has decided to treat all of the airports the same, whether they're operated and owned and operated by Zephyr Hills municipal government or they're privately owned. The county has said, we're gonna do noise studies and we're gonna treat them the same, even if they're public-private or, or private-private. But the statute actually only requires incompatibility and noise contours for, uh, where airport or an authority runs it, or the government runs it. This is your, your consultant. And I basically just put in here, the solution is, I think, and it was discussed, is to just use those noise contours for your, your noise abatement areas. You can see the difference between where these large areas are, they're just arbitrary under the statute, where you don't have a noise study and what the noise study is. I'll let Doug Saunders come up whenever he, he wants to speak to you about these slides here, because they, they're actually created by him. And I did hear Elizabeth Blair talk about the ordinance and say, okay, well, I've got in there that once complete, once these noise abatement areas, or these noise abatement areas may be, may be modified, should the county consultant's study be completed during the time the moratorium and, and are, and are adopted. That leaves a lot of may's and shoulds and are's, and what I'd ask, to be fair to all property owners, is that you actually get your noise studies, these contours, and then use those for, you know, for this type of regulations, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your indulgence.
Can I ask her a question?
Okay.
So I've flung it, flown into the St. Pete Clearwater Airport. Allegiant Airlines got a full-size plane. And it's probably as big a plane goes into Zephyr Hills or anywhere else. The results of the noise abatement study coming up, do you expect them to mirror the same requirements coming?
The best person to ask is, is Doug Saunders, because this is his area of expertise, so. I would just be parroting what I've learned from him, so. Please ask him and he'll be much more enlightening than me. But that's some of the basics.
Okay, so we have some people signed up, and maybe there's more people that want to speak, but we'll start with our list.
Okay, the first three signed up, I have Paul Prince, followed by C. Michael Hoover, and followed by Rick Warner. Mr. Prince, please state your name and address for the record, then begin.
Hello, my name's Paul Prince, my address is 11649 Pilot Country Drive, Spring Hill, Florida 34610. I'm here to speak in support of your moratorium and the zoning protection around airports. I don't think that you should approach this so much from a noise abatement as you should a safety issue. When we take off from Pilot Country on runway 36 due north, we have what we call a left-hand pattern there, which means you turn to the west as you come out of, of the, as, come out from your takeoff. Now, if you lose power at 500 or 600 feet out there, and you're over 41, you might not make it back to the airport. You're gonna go down on 41, or in Talavera, or in that new development that you just approved to the west of us. And that's, that's the safety aspect of it. As far as noise goes, my son bought a house in Talavera. We opposed that development four or five years ago, whenever it was going through. And they promised us that they would give letters to the people that were buying the homes in there. My son never got a letter, he knew Pilot Country was there. But I'm here to tell you, the people that are buying in there probably don't know there's an airport there. And they're buying houses so fast that they're not, they're not even in there looking. My son sold his house since he bought, and he had three offers before the sign went in the yard. People didn't even come look at the house, they're doing it online. Nobody's, nobody's warning them that there's an airport or the safety issue involved. And I think, although we do get complaints about the noise from the Talavera residents, I think you should look at it more from a safety standpoint of residentials and maybe an airplane going down, God forbid, in one of those subdivisions. Would be much better off with maybe a commercial building there with a stronger roof. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hoover, Michael Hoover?
My name is Michael Hoover, I also live in Pilot Country, 11219 Pilot Country Drive, Spring Hill, Florida 34610. With all due respect to Ms. Willhite, she's probably very good at three-card mottie. She's managed to obfuscate the issue by pointing at a runway noise contour and stating to you that that is what is necessary and applicable. She doesn't mention what's called the pattern of a general aviation airport. When an aircraft takes off, a commercial aircraft takes off from St. Petersburg Clearwater, they're generally, not generally, they are, by FAA mandate on what's called an instrument flight departure. And they exit the area straight ahead, climbing to altitude as quickly as they can. Their noise signature does not impinge on areas to the sides of the runway. And as she showed in her FAA states, uh, uh, noise contours, DPNL noise contours, that they are very close to the runway and to the runway protection zone. What you're required to do, uh, under 333-03 is to adopt airport regulations. And under 333-25.6, any zoning shall consider the safety of persons on the ground and in the air. When general aviation aircraft, which includes charter airlines or charter aircraft, medevac, police helicopters, et cetera, when they depart, they, as Paul Prince stated, make a departure to the left or the right, depending on that particular airport. And in Pilot Country, it's to, uh, we use what's called a left-hand pattern. And they then make a left turn and then again a left turn. So they're over the areas that are close to one half the runway distance from the runway itself. If we depart to the south, same thing, we would impact areas to the east of Pilot Country. So the noise impact is indeed an issue, but it's not just the runway. Further, the safety, which Paul brought up, is an issue. If an aircraft loses an engine, it's not gonna be straight ahead, it's gonna be after its turn and impact areas that may end up with residential if this moratorium is not approved. Thank you for your time.
All right, Rick Warner, followed by Mark Bud, followed by John Voda.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Madam Chair. We were here last night, if you remember, over on Newport Ritchie. And I'm a pilot, my name's Rick Warner. I live at 11710 Pilot Country Drive, also a former air traffic controller. And as I informed the board last time, you're creating what's called the kill zone. The hardest thing for a pilot to do is going from transitioning from a ground aircraft on the runway to transitioning to an aircraft, to actually flying vehicle. Not only, we've asked you, you would please not approve the proposal on the Campbell property, because you're putting life-threatening situations with a high density. We're not in favor, I mean, we're not against development, such as RV storage or U-storeage, things of that nature. I would personally like to invite every one of the board members to come out and watch some of the aviation activity that's out there. Paul Prince, who got up here ahead of time, is a student pilot, and frankly, it'll scare the hell out of you if you saw him take off and land. So I would recommend that you come out and actually see some of the operations. And, and, and I think it'd give you a different perspective to see what is going on. He was 100% correct, as standard pattern is to the left of the takeoff pattern that we're talking about, puts you right over the top of this proposed townhouses. Not to mention, you were mentioning before about them flying to the top of your house. Nowadays, you got kids with drones. Can you imagine a 12-year-old out there on the end of the runway playing with a drone or shining a laser light in somebody's eyes? So we ask respectfully that you do implement the, the moratorium and that you actually do not approve that Campbell property development as it is. Thank you.
Mark Bud, thank you.
Okay, my name's Mark Bud, I live at Pilot Country Estates as well, 11748 Driver Lane, Spring Hill.
Can you speak into the microphone so we can hear you?
Yeah, it's Mark Bud, I live at Pilot Country as well. And it's 11748 Driver Lane, Spring Hill, 34610. That airport is Clearwater exact, by the way, I was there many years as well. Okay, Pasco County has been in violation of that Florida statute 333 for years and continues to delay compliance to allow incompatible land use to the detriment of the airport and surrounding community development, impacting the safety and well-being of the citizens and the airport operations. Compliance was supposed to be done in July of 2017. It seems that other special interests have influenced the county affecting these continued delays to pursue their own interests, contrary to the Florida statute, which promotes protection of the county airport assets and the surrounding communities. It's important to, to say, it's not only the airport that you're protecting, you're protecting the people that are gonna be in these new developments as well. Their well-being, their safety. So I believe the moratorium on new development should be in place until the county meets its obligations with respect to the statutes 330 and 333. Recent proposed residential developments in close proximity to the airport would be considered incompatible land use by both the FAA dot, F dot and FAA guidelines with respect to zoning around the airports. Which I believe you're probably already aware of that. I myself fly, uh, a number of different aircraft. My son as well fly, we both fly competition aerobatics. Those airplanes are very loud, and I guarantee you, when we take off, it's not just the 60 dB, it's more like 105, 110 dB. And when we do a pattern like the. And when we do a pattern like the, the previous speakers were talking about, anytime we fly over the, those houses, it's about 100 dB. And this noise study, I believe, is supposed to have an average dB over time, over 24 hours. And that average, I believe, is supposed to be a logarithmic, logarithmic average. And even though sometimes these noise studies, when they're done, they may be done during a period of less activity, especially for us, my son and myself, and when we practice aerobatics, which is probably a little bit more extreme and, and noisy.
And you're talking about safety?
Well, it's safety, but we're, we're out over the wellfields, but it's in and, in and out of the airport that we, that we fly that's a problem for everybody else. And every time we take off, we're always thinking about, okay, if we had an engine failure, we had a problem, where are we going to go? And with the recent developments down to the southwest and northwest that are being proposed, they're right next to the end of the runway on the sides, they're about probably a couple hundred feet off the sides, but they really don't leave you much room to, to go anywhere in case of an emergency.
Okay, so I think that was the end of your time.
Okay.
But thank you. All right, who do we have next?
Coming up.
John.
Is that John?
Yes.
Yes, John. (laughing). Yes, my name is John Voda. I'm with Hidden Lake, 8641 Sky Master Drive, and I have been sworn in. The issue here with the airport is that we were supposed to have a commission that gets together, but that never happened. The, the noise issues that was all brought up, I welcome all of you, all of you, I couldn't even pilot, to come to our Young Eagle Flight Saturday morning. And if you don't think some noise is going to be generated over those new construction buildings, you're kidding yourself. I mean, that noise cone is a, it's ridiculous. The runway protection, when you build four-story buildings right in the downwind path of your runway, it's ridiculous. You guys ought to put the moratorium back, especially on the Tanglewood. The Hidden Lake is also planning on extending their runway if we can get the land available to the north. That will increase that dome that supposedly is, is out there. It's not big enough. We've got a mile-long runway right now, and that dome is inside Hidden Lake, and it's just touching those new apartment buildings. So that, that dome is a, is a joke. And you should put the moratorium back on these apartment complexes. What else we got? Population density, come on, folks, putting 300 people in a, in a building along with these people with the neighborhood right next to the runway, forget it. You're asking for trouble. Clearwater did make them shut down their airport because of all the complaints. And you're looking for more complaints with this one and Hidden Lake. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up?
Are there, are there people who'd like to speak? Please line up. Is there anyone else after this gentleman? Please line up. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commission. Jeremy Couch, 17937 Hunting Bow Circle, Lutes 33558. I represent the developer of the Ridge Road and Tanglewood apartment complex. In general, moratoriums are very serious things because of the potential effects it can have on others. When I read the exemption and the ordinance that's proposed, I do have concern with the language. It says that, does not depict buildings within the noise abatement area. We have a gazebo that we promised in our park, and that is a building, so I'd like to add to the language habitable buildings, if possible. Does not depict habitable buildings within the noise abatement area. Also, our consultant's going to speak. You know, when, when you look at the area of the moratorium, it should be much closer to the airport than it is right now in general. It affects the college significantly, and I don't know how long this will take, but I just would like to not see those kind of unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is there anyone else after this gentleman?
Doug Saunders, CS Companies, 1118 O'Day Drive, Winter Springs, Florida. Oh, yeah. Just a couple things, too, regarding the runway protection zones. That's really the ideal when they're talking about the safety factor. I'm in aviation businesses, all I care about is safety, and that's really why the runway protection zones are there. So they're the trap as well at the end of the runway. And also regarding the flight path, they are correct about the IFR, VFR. So this airport follows, does follow VFR criteria, which is really by pilot's choice for the area. And when they're doing the left-hand turn, their final base will not be over this property because it's exactly to the west of the end of the runway. So when they're landing or taking off, they will not be over this property. They'll be within the transitional service for the FAA, so it should not be a concern. Regarding the noise, there is no microphones in the field for this type of study. Who Pasco County hired was HMH, very legit firm. They follow a system called FAA AEDT. It's a system that really is by calculation, the type of aircraft, there really is no study in the field. So it's really, doesn't matter what flies in or out that day, it's really based on a calculation for a, a yearly, yearly average. What you see up here, too, is, so this is Orlando International Airport, and that's just the, the line you see up there is within a half-mile. If I would say half the runway length for an airport like this, it'd be three times bigger than that, that shape outside of that. So there's already homes and apartments and hotels within a large airport like Orlando Here's Tampa International. Same thing, this line is, the runways were, I guess, and Orlando National has 366,000 operations a year. Tampa has about 150,000, 170,000 operations a year, a little more than 10,000 that currently these other airports in the area have. So also, you can see here at Tampa International, residential homes, apartments within a half-mile. Again, it'd be two to three times larger than that if you followed your noise abatement rule. And here's St. Pete, Clearwater, same thing, there's homes, divisions within, within those areas. Yeah, I really want to say, really regarding safety, I mean, also, these properties, both, both properties have submitted to the FAA 7460 Notice of Construction, both of them have received determination of no hazard air navigation. The FAA's reviewed these. There's no, there's no challenges with the FAA criteria, and that's what FDOT follows. So really, there's no, there's no challenges with the FDOT. It's been approved for these type of facilities. The height is fine, you're in the transitional, the side surface, so there is no, no challenges with these airports. With that, thank you very much.
Did you, did your question get answered well enough that you don't need to ask him?
Thank you. Again, Jennifer Mottzinger, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. The only thing that I wanted to point out is the word "moratorium." That gives me a lot of concern just because of the nature of it. It sounds to me like this is something that's been going on since 2016, and you have studies that are coming forward, and you're going to be able to make some good policy decisions. However, you don't have to pull the trigger on a moratorium. And we all know what happens, because I've talked to you about it before. It affects banks, it affects lending, it affects lots of things. And believe me, I get calls all the time about moratoriums. So just that word alone is typically reserved for an emergency situation, and that's clearly not what is going on here. So I appreciate all of the different perspectives, and I do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is anyone online?
No one's on WebEx.
Okay, back to us then. Questions, board members, do you have any more questions? So, you know, I, I want to say, I think I've told the pilots here, I have pilots in my family. My ex-husband actually was a pilot, I didn't mention that last time. He used to, for fun, not in law, he was a baseball player. But he used to pick up my kids at the airport in Odessa, that's no longer there, and on his way to FSU football games, and he'd touchdown, they'd get in the plane and off they'd go. And then I have a brother-in-law and a son-in-law, both graduates of the Air Force Academy, that are pilots. One, one was a commander, a squadron commander of refuelers. And my son-in-law, who's now deployed in Germany, is a commander of air fueling, refueling squadron. So I have pilots in the family. And I, and I love the idea that you guys can have, live and support what maybe for most of you are a wonderful hobby or sport. Maybe some of you commute by airplane to work. I have had friends who've done that in the past. But I think you need to be really careful when you start imposing restrictions on property owners that are not, you know, that are near you, near you. That, in my mind, that starts to become a taking. And so while I get where we need to have some safety concerns and make sure that you can land, that you guys can land and take off properly, for me, that's about where your property rights stop and others start kicking in. So we have to be very careful. We, we go through lawsuits all the time. We have one going on right now. So I am curious, Terry, can you tell us what came in as far as the noise abatement study or points or whatever that was? And what your thoughts are coming from the planning department to fix, you know, obviously we need to do something, we were supposed to do something a while ago. Does it amount to a moratorium? I don't know.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Well, what we received from HMH was the, it's a technical memorandum regarding the noise model inputs. This information is what's going to be used to ultimately generate the contours. It's basically following the flight paths, what's actually happening around the airports, what's taking off, what's coming down. Types of airplanes, single-engine versus double-engine, the rates of, how many times they're landing in one direction versus another. All that information are the model inputs. Once those are verified and confirmed, which I believe they've been shared with the airports already, once those are confirmed, they'll be able to take those inputs, enter them into the models that Mr. Saunders referred to, and then generate the contour lines based on those movements that are being, and that's all from, I believe it's all from, I'm not exactly familiar with all the terminology, I think it's called flight aware. It's data that the aircraft are transmitting as they're coming and going to the airports.
All right, so do you guys have any questions for Terry?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want you guys to take one more stab at this. Here's what I, here's my suggestion, and obviously let the board weigh in on it, is I know there's made some attempts to get everybody together, but it just doesn't seem to be happening. Different schedules, I understand, make it difficult at times. I would love to see planning, I'd love to see county attorney's office, I'd love to see members from the airport committee or board, I forgot what we call it now, but I'll say, is it a committee or board? Commission? Commission? A commission, and then we had some people, other stakeholders that were involved as well back there. Why don't you guys really work hard to get your schedules together and have everybody in the same room, see if we can come to some happy meeting. And I say that because you heard some of the issues that I have, you heard some of the concerns other commissioners have as well. There may be a good way to work this. Obviously, you know, safety first, that's what we're talking about. That's what I would like to see. If it, if it doesn't happen, it's going to be up to us, right? That's what it comes down to. But I'd love to see you guys try to get everybody in that room one more time. And when I mean everybody, everybody, county attorneys, planning, again, commission, and then the stakeholders that presented earlier.
So the commission is a sunshine law body, you can't.
Okay, about the chair of the commission, or their designate?
If, if the board wishes to send this back to the commission, they can hold a hearing, but they already have.
Right.
And they've approved what's in front of them.
So what I, again, from my understanding, from, from my understanding is that there were some meetings that we were trying to get everybody together recently, and not everybody was able to all be in the room together. Am I incorrect? Am I, am I, this, I'm hearing yes and no here.
There, there have been meetings that have been held.
Pardon, I can't hear you.
There, there have been meetings.
Can we turn the mic up a little bit? Because it's been really loaded in.
That one. Mine seems working.
It's not, and out there, it's kind of been low in the back.
Madam Chair.
There have been meetings, numerous different meetings.
Right.
Many, some have had all the players at the table, many have not had all the players.
Well, they need to all be at the table.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, so go. So why don't we get everybody in there together, again, not to violate sunshine like Mr. Saunders later mentioned, can't come to a good conclusion, comes back to us and, and we'll, we'll make that decision. Because the next public hearing's scheduled already. Because right now, how it sits now and how it looks, I would, my, my suggestion would be, just to be honest with you, no moratorium, work on it. But I've given the opportunity for everybody to get back together, again, this is just one commissioner talking, see if we can come to a happy meeting here. Again, look out for safety, safety being first, without jeopardizing property owners that have already been given permission to do something. Again, there's things I voted against that we're talking about. I actually voted against it. But at the same time, I lost the vote, the rest of the commission voted for it.
We voted right.
And you can't, no.
Not at all.
But you can't, but you can't, but at the same time, that's what, that was the end result, and now we can't go back, in my opinion, and take something rights away from somebody that was offered by this commission.
Okay.
And that, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, I mean, that's something you voted for yourself, too, and in the apartment complex they're talking about. You were the, one of the biggest advocates for that apartment complex to be built. So I guess I'm trying to figure out what you're doing in that area, because I'm kind of confused.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Due to the safety and the fact that the APZ was supposed to be implemented in 2017, also due to the fact when there was a conflict arising, my resolution to that conflict to protect the airports was to move forward with the APZ. At this point, I would like to see the moratorium, the motion to approve with the moratorium.
So, so this is the, this is the first public hearing.
So you would, if you want to move forward with what's on the table now, you would end, conclude the first public hearing, and you would continue the final public hearing to May 17, 2022, or at 1:30 or soon thereafter.
I would like to conclude the first public hearing and move to continue the final public hearing to May 17. With that being said, I would also like to move forward with adding habitable buildings on Page 4, Paragraph 4, and may to shall on Page 3, Section 5A, which would implement, when the noise study comes in, it would be implemented and updated from the original area. And then then we can focus and finalize the moratorium for, on May 17, so we can focus on the APZ. As soon as we finalize the APZ, the moratorium will be over. And the quickest way to finalize the APZ is to get the noise study and to move forward. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, there's no motions anyway, because we're, this is.
We're moving to the final hearing on May 17.
There's not, you don't need a motion.
Correct.
So, so the, so the first and second public hearings caught up to one another because the board had continued this. So you've got both hearings advertised for today. So you, you need to continue the final public hearing, which, which can't occur because you had to have the first hearing to the 17th to take final action, or to some other day.
So is the motion just to continue to the next hearing?
No, she's, well, she's approving the moratorium, the first reading of the moratorium. That was her motion, right? Approving the moratorium.
That's two separate motions.
It's concluding, it's concluding today's hearing on the moratorium, and then continue. and then continuing the second hearing, which happened to coincide because of the way things had gotten continued, to the May 17th, 2020. What she, what, what I think the commissioner is trying to do is saying that she wants to, the public comment that, that occurred when, in several of those sections, she wants incorporated into this, into the ordinance when it comes back on the 17th. The, the issue on habitables, habitable buildings.
Page 4, Paragraph 4, and then May to show be modified on Page 3, Section 5A. So it not might, but it will be implemented when the noise study comes in.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So what that'll do is what you want it to do. It gives the stakeholders a chance, two weeks to get together before the next meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Do we have, do I, I just need some type of agreement, though, that that's going to happen, so.
Maybe we want to move the second reading a little further out.
No.
Oh, make sure they have...
I would like to see this get finalized.
Can I continue with my comment?
I would just like...
Madam Chair?
Yep. You have the mic.
I need this, I need people to come to an agreement. Do I have, I mean, somehow I have a county attorney's agreement? Do I have planning's agreement? Do I have somebody from the commission's agreement? Do I have whoever's in charge of the stakeholders, which is like, they're, you and I think, Barbara, you know, I think, okay. I mean, do I have, do I see heads nodding? Or can I have everybody raise their hand? That's an agreement? County attorney's office?
If invited, we want that.
Okay, okay, okay. Teri? Yes? So I got thumbs up from everybody?
I hope we could do it that way.
Could we also meet at the airport commission meeting? So then there's no sunshine violations?
The next airport zoning commission meeting is not scheduled until June 20th. That's part of the hesitancy. Now, to have their chairperson come, yes, that would be great. So I would have to check with him. He's not present today.
Madam Chair?
If the chair can't come, can we have a designate?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, there is a representative from Hidden Lake Airport that is on the airport commission?
Yes, there is.
Thank you, I thought so. And then the goal would be to finalize and move forward with the moratorium just so we can move forward and put all of our focus onto the APZ?
Correct.
Thank you.
Then we have one final question for some direction. When I spoke about limiting the moratorium area, the uses in the moratorium area just to the residential and educational facilities, I did not get any feedback on that matter.
Well, yeah, we don't want...
Continuing with...
But I have a question for you. How long is it going to take for you to make the ordinance? I mean...
Well, now that the sound study's back, soon.
Planning Department.
Teri? How long will it take to, for you to craft this ordinance? Because I, I'm not 100% sure I'm in favor of moratorium. I just have questions. I just think these are quick fixes that...
Yeah. Would you like me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Well, I actually have a draft started that was set aside.
But he just said it's the planning department's role to do the moratorium, the ordinance.
Okay.
So we have a, we have a draft, but it's, but the, but the technical language, what, what the regulations will be is a planning department function. That was the comment I made.
Okay, so how long for you guys? So you guys need to take the lead, then tell you, then tell the attorneys what we want written, right? If it's a land planning document? So what, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, if the, if the second hearing is May 17th, it's, it's going to happen the next...
No, for the ordinance, not the moratorium.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm not going to put you on that spot.
Yeah, the goal, the goal has been to complete the regulations this summer. So July was the initial target, to finish the right, the actual regulations. I would have to, you know, to, I don't know, conservative estimate a little bit here. The comprehensive plan gives us to the end of 2022, so we're going to finish it this calendar year. Yeah, so I would maybe push it out to September to cover the, the ground that may have been...
So the summer?
There is more to the process than is the typical ordinance adoption because it does have to go to the airport zoning commission for a public hearing there.
And then the planning commission?
And then the planning commission, then you all twice.
Okay, well... So we have a motion, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Elizabeth? You had said, can this be drafted and brought to the airport zoning, the airport commission to be reviewed so it can come back to be finalizing the APZ?
Okay, the moratorium or the ordinance?
The ordinance.
Oh, yes, that has to go to them for a public hearing. Not the moratorium ordinance, it's already been there. But they have to actually have a public hearing and do a report to this board about their recommendation for the final airport zoning regulations to be adopted.
And do you think we can bring the APZ to the airport commission by the meeting in June? And then bring it back to the board in July for the APZ finalization?
I'm not quite sure who the working group is for that effort. I think there's dialogue that has to be had here most definitely because there's partial drafts, and then there's different ideas as to what should be in the final product, from what I'm understanding. So I'm, I can't promise any timeframe on that. I'm not in charge of that, in control of it.
Okay, but now that we have the sound study, is there anything, additional documentations that we're waiting on to finalize the APZ? So it should be done within the next 90 days?
I don't think there's additional stuff that we're waiting on from our airports or the stud, or the consultant, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to move on to the final reading in two weeks with the understanding that there'll be a meeting in between.
Yeah, Madam Chair. That meeting's not held, I'm going to ask for it to be continued again.
Agreed.
So...
Yeah, I'm waiting for Oakley. I'm waiting for Mr. Oakley to get back. Okay, so all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who said aye? Who said aye?
Aye for opposed?
No, aye, aye for...
Aye for passing, okay.
For moving forward.
Okay, so we'll move forward, conditionally.
I know we're opposed.
Okay, we're going to pull up, oh, yeah. Could I please get a motion to receive this in?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, we are going to move up to the CPV, whatever number that is.
Madam Chairman, would you like me to review the procedure?
Yes.
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners and staff or planning commission has, has recommended approval, and there's no opposition to the application, will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that your public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for the board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found in the Board's Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear people in?
Absolutely. You're here to speak on the remaining matters. If you could please stand and raise your right hands. Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay, so P-58 is a continuous...
Can you maybe just read it real quick?
Yeah, let's get out of the way.
Let me do the pub real quick.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. It was, P-58 was published in Tampa Bay Times on March 2nd, 2022.
P-58 is PDD 220053. It's for a compliant amendment for Gateway Hub, and the request is to continue the item to the June 21st, 2022, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. I'm sorry, that should be Newport Ritchie.
Let's continue it up.
All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Is there anyone here in opposition of P-60? Is there anyone online in opposition to P-60?
There's no one online and no one signed up.
Move for approval, P-59, the only consent item.
I thought she said P-60.
She said P-60.
P-60.
Oh, wow.
And I'd like to read the publication for the record.
Okay, I'm just going to get that in, because then we only have one left.
Just ahead.
Okay, P-60 pub, is that what I'm doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Item P-60 was published on the Tampa Bay Times on April 10th, 2022, and April 17th, 2022.
And just for the record, just to read it, FAC 220140. It's petition to vacate, vacation of a platted right-of-way, Orange Dale Avenue, Dade City, Maria Carrasco, and there's no funding required. We're asking you to approve this item.
No one here to speak? Oh, there is. Oh, are you, are you here to speak in opposition?
No.
Okay. Don't, hang on.
Okay, I'll take my question. You guys want a full presentation on that one?
Your decision now.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Done? Okay, now, this is, P-59 is a consent, but I had heard that some of you may want to speak on it. But if you don't, then I'll leave it on consent. But I thought you might want to.
District, I'll leave it on consent.
All right, so we will not leave it on.
Okay. Did you want a full presentation or just want to ask the questions?
I can just, I can ask two questions.
Sure. Let me, let me read it if it's okay, and we'll get the advertising. And thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right. Item P-59 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on April 6th, 2022.
So P-59 is PDD 227542. It's for Swope MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, Running Dog Ranch, Inc., S. Morris, Kiffendale, Inc., and Swope 535419. It's for a rezoning from an ACAAR district to MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, to allow a maximum of 953 single-family detached units, 119 single-family attached, 336 multifamily units, and 116 882,000 square feet support, commercial uses on 493 acres approximately. Comes through with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. Do you have some questions?
Okay. Commissioner Mariano had some questions.
Yeah, first of all, the traffic study, and Brad, you and I talked about this before. Was the traffic study done at the appropriate times, meaning peak hours?
Brad, tip in Planning and Development. I'm going to have our, our team come up. Essen, I believe, can speak to this very specifically about that study.
And for the board, while they're coming up, the reason I, I question the study is I look at all the traffic that runs coming from the east side to the west side. If you're at 4:30 traffic, 5:30, it's happened several times. It takes me over 20 minutes to get to the intersection at 41. And I just want to make sure that you guys have accounted for the proper timing with your study.
Commissioner Mariano, Board, my name is Essen Kalil with Current Planning. Yes, Commissioner Mariano, when we do these types of traffic analysis, we are looking, they're based on PM, peak hour, or the peak hour, actually. Could be AM, PM, both. So the studies are done in two parts. One is looking at the roadway capacity, whether the roadway, whether it be a two-lane, four-lane, whether it can handle this added development traffic, you know, through the build-out year of this development. And the second phase of the study is looking at their specific access, meaning how many cuts they're going to have on a particular highway, what improvements are they going to be triggering, which may include turn lanes, which may include signalization of the intersections, so on so forth. When we reviewed this specific project, we did look at the segment of Highway 52 and the intersections that are included in it. Specifically, US 41, we did not go that far out to look at that segment. And I think the reason for that was because, one, the impacts of the traffic we did not believe are going, going to go out that far. And plus, that segment of 52 is under construction right now for improvements. And it is scheduled to be completed, if I'm not mistaken, by year 2023. So that will drastically, you know, improve the level of service at that intersection and the delay that you're experiencing in the morning heading east, PM heading west. And the same happens on US 41. The northbound delay that you experience in the peak hours. This segment that's along this project, along 50, the 52 segment, east of US 41 going to Bellamy, there are no signalized intersections. And for our guidelines, it's considered to be a free-flowing segment, uninterrupted flow. So when you look at these studies and you review these traffic studies, we're looking at a much higher capacity because it is free-flowing in that segment. When we reviewed this specific traffic study, through their build-out year, that segment of 52 does not show failure. The intersection that you're talking about may show, specific spots may show certain failures for certain movements. In the case of US 41, it is going to be improved to some reconstruction. There was a delay because there was a contractor that, you know...
What, what?
Right, so now it is underway and it's going to be done. So does that answer your question?
That's, that's good, thank you. So again, that was a concern of mine, I want to have it addressed. Certainly, we know, but I, I get the verification, we did talk about it yesterday. And one other point I want to bring out, in the future, if somebody has industrial land desires in the, in this CPEV, I don't want them to have to go to a public hearing, have to a swap. I want them to be able to just get it real easy to get themselves industrial land to bring in more jobs. So it's not upsetting to this particular one, but I thought it was appropriate for the conversation, especially what we saw today.
Madam Chair, just, just to jump on that bandwagon again, like we mentioned earlier, we had ex parte communication with the, with the applicant, ex parte communication with the neighboring parcel as well. And that's even the neighborhood parcel, we were having that conversation, it's like, hey, you know, in the future, like you stated, and that's why we brought it up earlier to Dan and make sure everybody's on board, you guys are all on board, right? Is that we don't have to go through that process because we want industrial, we want to continue industrial. Them having, in my opinion, again, this was done by, a long time ago, for you were here and you were here and most of us were here, but them having to go through this swap thing, I mean, the time and energy it takes to do it. We want more industrial, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's, it's a lot of work for people. So, you know, with, if the neighbors, and I see some neighbors sitting out in the audience, if they want to be able to put industrial, they should be able to do that, do it tomorrow if they want to.
So we'll definitely take that, so, Madam Chair, I'm comfortable with it, so.
No, I have, I have questions, sorry. Sorry, Joel, but I have some questions for you. Looking at the outline of the property, I see you've grabbed an interesting part of the trail. So I just want to understand what's going on down there.
Yeah, we, Joel to, Joel to, to an associate for the applicant and the property owner. I don't know what you mean by grab the trail.
Well, I...
We own, right, we...
See that red little tail? How, I mean, so that's, that is the Orange Dock Trail.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So what's going on there?
I got it. A good while ago, the property owner, part of the acquisition of this parcel had that, that piece with it as part of the property ownership. And we recognize that, and we are including that in the MPUD plan. We, we are accommodating that and planning for that future trail system. And we, of course, will tie our project into that. And we're happy to have that future trail system be there on that southern piece. So the good news actually is that this MPUD owner owns that much of it. So ours is being committed in this MPUD, MPUD zoning.
Okay, so, and it'll be more than, I mean, I, I hope you're really planning to amenitize that portion of the trail through...
Well, I figured you would be building that trail up to Hernando and Citrus County. We have the land, we're, we're setting aside the land, and obviously, we will, we will do whatever we're required to do in that section of the trail. You just need to make sure as all these others come in that you get the rest of that piece along that southern boundary.
Yeah.
Because you've got all these divided ownerships. The good news is Mr. Swope has a large chunk of it for you, so you're, you're getting your first piece.
All right, and also, I noticed in your conditions that you were asking for reduction in the park for that multifamily.
It, it, we unfortunately have to ask for it as a variation, but what we're asking for is exactly what this board has approved on the last eight or 10 projects that we've brought through.[1752.91] brought through. We're getting exactly the same thing, which is, it's what is supported by parks and natural resources. We're complying exactly with their current requirement. Frankly, they just haven't had time to get around to updating your code to make that the norm for multifamily projects, but they're, they're approving that condition in everyone. We just approved it at Newport Corners and Two Rivers and everywhere else.
And lastly, and this is kind of for Terry, too, I guess, last night, some of the planning staff and I attended the Talk About Town that Frank Starkey had with the Executive Director of the Congress for New Urbanism, and we got into a discussion about parking and over-parking, and it seems to me we still are over-parking our apartments, and it's just a shame. I saw, I saw, I think, two-point-two percent for apartments.
Well, your standard right now is two-point-two or two-point-two-five, but, but what, what staff has been doing consistently and what they have agreed to here is one-point-nine.
Yeah, I saw that.
We still, we still think that's too high, but that's what they will give us, so that's what we've been taking on all these is one-point-nine.
So, I'm wondering if some of that, when, when this layout is done, if some of that could be done in a format for maybe some trailhead parking for the trail, and as overflow for the apartments, maybe we can get some parking for the trail there, because I think it's overparked for apartments. I know Frank was saying he has forty-five units in his building in downtown Newport Richey, and he has forty-five cars. So, you know, we're at two-point-two per apartment, so I, I really think we need to reduce that. It's, it's overparked.
I, I agree, Commissioner Brad Tippin, again. We are looking at parking in the very near future. We are working through the landscape, code changes first. Parking is gonna be one of the next pieces on that agenda, so we will, we will address that in more detail. We have heard that some parking for certain apartment complexes, they've been able to show studies saying that they're at one-six.
Yeah.
You know, in some cases lower, but it's kind of the, the area, when you're in a suburban area, it's a little bit different, the walkability, you still need to have cars, there's, you know, even if you can walk somewhere, you need a place to park your car for when you can't walk somewhere. So, it's a little bit of a, a mixed bag, so we look at each case individually and independently, and right now, one-point-nine is, is where we feel comfortable for the time being, but we will certainly look at that again with the parking that comes in with code. As to the little piece of trail that you're talking about, we have talked about that extensively with Tina Russo and NPO and the trail system, and the Parks Group as well, related to the comments that Joel made on the ten percent, using the ten percent of the acreage at the multifamily spot for that. That is something that we do consistently. So, to, you know, incorporate what we can into a, a park system or a trail system, we'll do, if there's some parking that we can accommodate for a, a pseudo-trailhead type of scenario, we can certainly look at that as well at time of site plan, we can see what space is there and how it works. I did speak with Tina with NPO, and she said that she was comfortable with this the way it was because the southern edge there is all swift mud property. That's not going to be developed, and swift mud is generally okay with trail systems that kind of meander into their property. So, we, we think that we'll have an ability to be able to make some stuff work, but we can't really get into that until site plan. So, I believe the applicant, they're, they're willing to discuss that at site plan, and, and we can look into all those details, making sure that they have connections to the trail where they're reasonable and, and whatnot.
Okay. Well, that'll help their project sell very quickly.
Would approve or consider, Jim?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
That's it?
No, well, we have Commissioner.
Yeah, midnight in the book.
Alright.
Wait a minute, you got too much stuff.
I've got two small things, just a little bit stuck.
Guess where it all goes?
Commissioner Oakley.
Yes, ma'am. The main thing I'd like to bring up today is the fact that we all know, and I've get cause, and I'm sure y'all get the same kind of cause of how things get slowed down in the system, and, and it takes a little longer in some areas and all, but on behalf of all our staff and Dan and his group, all, all the things that I see, they're working on very hard, they're just overloaded with work, and I want to thank all the staff and all your actors to what they do, and I appreciate everything they do, and I know all of us do. So, I know you're pushed to the limits to get things moving and quicker, and some things slow it up at times, but when the day's over, they're doing a good job, and they are working as hard as they can. Well, thank you. That's all I have.
Right, Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick items. Last week, I had the honor of participating in a press, a press conference with the Tampa Warriors Hockey Program at Advent Health Center ICE. From June tenth to eleventh, it will have a twenty-two-hour marathon of games and events to raise awareness for the fact that twenty-two veterans a day die by suicide. Obviously, that's, one is too many, as we all know. So, we should all do what we can to support our veterans, continue to serve our veterans that serve this great nation of ours. And the opening ceremonies for this is at six-thirty PM on June tenth at Advent Health Center ICE in Westy Chapel. So, for the public, come on out during the day on June eleventh. I know they're gonna have teams coming from across the state and across the country. In addition to, here's a neat puck for their, for their event. In addition to veterans, there's also a lot of first responders that participate, fire rescue, people in fire rescue, as well as police and sheriff's deputies from across the nation, too, so many being veterans. So, let's continue to support this, this event, and many others like it. Secondly, again, we mentioned earlier, I'm not gonna get into it, you know, thanks to FDOT for getting the Diverging Diamond open, there's, there's more lanes to come, we need more lanes, but at least they're making that conversion now. When it's all open, it's gonna be definitely smooth sailing. If you've driven the one in Sarasota or other classes, other places across the nation, you realize how much of a positive impact it has on those interchanges, and so we can't wait for that. But again, thanks to FDOT, but I also want to, you know, thank our legislators, because back, I remember when I came on in two thousand and fourteen, they were talking about doing this and starting construction in, what, twenty twenty-four. So, you know, I remember spending hours, and I've worked very closely as, you know, as well as your support, with your support as well, with our legislators to get this thing moved up and get some money through appropriations, and thankfully for Speaker Cork and Durnessheim, and started with Speaker Weatherford to help get this thing moved up. If not, we'd be looking at probably twenty twenty-eight. So, that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
And I'm not sure which photos are gonna come up first. But one thing, other item that I've been working on is working with the schools, public schools, so we can have a joint agreement for the playgrounds to be opened after schools and on weekends. I would like to see that. I know I have family in, out of state, and every weekend, you would see all of the families utilizing the parks and the track and the fields and tennis courts, and it's really nice to see the families come together. I would like to, next is, I would like to congratulate the thirty-two new firefighters on their promotions, or the thirty-two, welcome the thirty-two new firefighters and congratulate the thirty-two new firefighters on their promotions. Speaking of the fire department, we have the new station number nine at fifty-two in Sun Coast is expecting to be open by August, and I will be following very closely their timeframe. Seven, Station seventeen is a rebuild on, in Seven Springs, and they're looking to open in November. We have three additional ambulances that should be coming into service. In October, we will be expecting to have ambulance two-twenty-three placed in service as well. And what I would really like to highlight is Station thirty, we have the new ambulance two-thirty that has been into service as of yesterday. It was expected to be there tomorrow, but it will be there today, and yesterday.
Is that it?
Nope. Okay, next we have the Commissioner Baby, it's the Commissioner Baby Shower, and we're looking for anyone to donate diapers of all sizes, diaper cream, baby formulas, bottles, pacifiers, wipes, and clothing. The benef, this, these will be, these items will be donated to Sunrise of Tampa Bay, Sunrise of Pasco County for the Domestic Violence Shelter, and last year with Sun Coast Voices, this year will be Sunrise. And we will be collecting items May ninth through to June seventeenth, and then we will let you know when the day to come out, if you would like to bring any additional items, the day of. Next. And lastly, I would like to mention Bring Your Child's Work Day. I would like to thank every Pasco County staff member that brought their child and that helped put this event together, and do you have the photo? Should be a photo. So, it was really nice to see all the kids and the families come together. The kids asked a million questions, and when you thought the questions were gonna be over, they came up with even more questions. They got to participate and sit up on the dais and practice their budgets and go from emergency management over to finance department. So, that was really nice to see everyone come together and put on a great day for the children. And lastly, Stations two, three, and four are expected to be in fiscal year twenty-three, in fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three. And I would also like to dive into the budget, because I'm, and I'm gonna be looking very closely into the budget for fire rescue. We have approved a percentage increase for sanitary waste and garbage service, and I would like to look at a flat rate increase or an additional funding for the fire rescue so we can ensure and improve the times for the fire, for arrival, for the safeties of all citizens, and we also have to consider the mental health and the well-being of all of our first responders. So, I will be looking into that and see if we can do a flat rate across the board. Thank you.
Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dan, do you have those pictures? Well, those pictures are coming up. There was a fire, I guess, last weekend over in Leisure Beach. That fire got very close to the homes of there, puts the people in homes in danger as well as the firefighters in danger. We've tried to do different things as far as dealing with homeless folks that are living on property illegally. You know, yearly renewals of the trash passing ordinance is certainly hampered. These are some pictures of one of the residents from Leisure Beach sent, sent me this morning, last night. They just had a board meeting yesterday, they're gonna be talking about it next week, about what to do about this situation. And it's just, it's just not, it's not good for Pasco County.
No.
And then, the approach we've been taking has been one, but I'm gonna suggest, after talking to our county attorney, and talking about other things that we could do for a different approach, and maybe it is going directly to the owner of the land who maintains any situation contrary to the code may be responsible for this violation. Some examples that could be done, as far as persons camping on undeveloped parcels, commit a multitude of code violations. Number one, zoning violation, it's not a permit of use to camp on any property other than one's zone for a campground. If commercial zoning, no person allowed to design in the parcel except in narrow circumstances. That's one possibility. Littering, placing debris on property without consent of the owner. Unlawful acts. It is unlawful to leave any solid waste in any location within a solid waste recovery system. This would include trash as well as human waste. Use of public service required. No person shall dispose of human excrement in a toilet. Acquability from debris, trash or junk visible from right-of-way in abutting parcels. Open burning permitted. All of these violations I just mentioned are violations of code compliance, has issued citations for illegal campers and onto the property owners in the past, and that the attorney's office has prosecuted successfully. I'm gonna say, I was happy to see we have a new code compliance director. But I will tell you, of all the problems I have in my district, up and down, especially nineteen, the homelessness is a major one. And I want to give thanks to the board, thanks to code compliance, and the sheriff's office for working very hard on the right-of-way ordinance for safety, because the number of panhandlers diminished dramatically, working together. But we're still not done solving the issue, and, and people are very disturbed, especially, like I said, Leisure Beach, and this could happen anywhere around any other property. So, I want to see that our team, working with Patrick Aroten now, that Sally, we can get a team up to go stop looking at these processes. Captain, Commissioner Starkey, you've had great success clearing out a couple of years as well, they cleaned out some of mine as well, but this is an ongoing thing that we need to deal with. Unemployment is at zero percent, as far as every economist will tell you. People can have jobs, we still go to places, everybody's looking for workers, there's opportunities that are out there. I want to try to help them. In saying that, too, I want to take a look at what we're gonna do for mental health, substance abuse, to try to help those that are trying to get help, they just don't know how to get help. But it's something that I want to see code stepping up, using this approach if need be to go forward.
So, we used that, we used that, kind of, we cited the owner behind the Walgreens or CVS, whatever it was, at Bridge in nineteen, for operating a campground. What was frustrating was he had a no trespassing sign, and he had already cleaned it up once or twice, but, you know, there was no action on no trespassing. And, and, and so, the only thing left for our staff, for us, was to use code and say they weren't, he was operating a campground. The owner did clean it up, and he grew, he had to clean it up twice, because even while he cleaned up most of it, they came and dumped more on a little section he had cleaned up, so he came back in and cleaned it up again. Let me say that FGUA had a well there, and they had to shut the well for contamination of feces.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, so, God knows what, what they, was going on there before they caught it. Then this is just a little teeny-tiny strip, and they said it was full of hypodermic needles, full of hypodermic needles. So, yeah, I, I, hey, anything we can do to keep, stop enough from happening, I'm in, so. Okay, anything else?
I want to say, you know, coming up with taking over the jail is gonna be a major thing that we all need to be focused on. I think, I know, Dan, if you wanted to give reports, maybe every other meeting, or you're gonna touch on it anyway. But coming up in Orlando, I think there's a couple of counties up there that actually took over their jails. If anybody's going to FAC, might be a good opportunity to go take a look at it, or just take a trip. I also want to go take a look down at Charlotte County. They have built, I guess, their own hospital next to the jail, started a couple of years ago, but I think I want to delve deeper into what they're doing to take those people that keep on going into jail for recurring things that are all mental health or drug-related, that maybe what they're doing is something we need to incorporate in the future coming up so that we can maximize our jail expansion and, and use, I think, the opioid funds that are coming our way. If we need to go expand and put that into it, let's go use that treatment. As the sheriff said, eighty-five percent of the drug overdoses or drug-related folks are going to, through the jail. And if we can bypass that, it'd be much better shape.
Cheaper kind of facility.
Much better way to go.
Yeah, good idea.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Administrator.
Yes, ma'am. I'll start with one that I thought Commissioner Moore was gonna mention, but the Ren Fest that just closed up, we had over eighty thousand visitors for, with Lakucha Park as part of the Ren Fest. So, that's, second year it's been here, and it's grown pretty substantially each year. So, right in your backyard, Commissioner Oakley. That's good. The other thing is, Commissioner Mariano, we have the ADA accessible beach match out at Sun West now, we have two of them, one on the north and one on the south end. So.
Excellent.
So, now we have ADA access at that beach. So, the detention center, so I'm gonna start off with, you know, one thing each of y'all mentioned in the meetings was making sure we take care of the people, the, the current employees that are out there, and make sure we take care of them. So, as part of that, this week is actually National Corrections Officer and Employee Appreciation Week. So, so, that's one of the places Joanna slipped out to go see them at one of their shift changes, and I'm gonna try to make the shift change later this week. So, we'll actually be highlighting some of them on social media, even though they're not our employees yet. But, you know, one of the things about taking care of people is make sure you recognize them for the work they're doing and stuff like that. So, that's part of it. We've, you know, we've got some project managers, a team working on the, the scope of this and putting things together. We've drafted several documents, we're about to bring in, you know, county attorney's team on some of those because they're ordinances or resolutions or interlocal agreements that we're gonna have to have, so we're working through that. You know, we've had meetings in the jail with the teams, on our side, their side, finance meeting on the eighteenth, nineteen meeting on the nineteenth, HR on the twenty-first. HR's actually been in there several times to talk to them about the different things here we do at the county. And so, a lot of stuff happening. We'll try to work through, make sure you get up to each, the first meeting of each month, not, it's too much going on to try to do it every two weeks, but the first meeting of each month, what's going on. We'll say we are working through the budgeting process, not just for this, but, you know, the three budgets that were due over, on the first SOE clerks and sheriff's budget, we all got, so we're working that into the process. I think we start our one-on-ones with you next week, as far as where we are in the budget. I'm finishing up my meetings with the different directors. It's coming together. There's still some unknowns out there. Some of that's what the governor does with the state budget, because that does affect us to a certain extent. But with, with respect, there's a, you know, a lot happening right now between the jail transition, putting the budget together for this fiscal year. So, I think we're in good shape. Timeline-wise, it's still tight to meet a ten-one deadline, but, you know, we're gonna do the best we can to try to get there. And I've gotten a commitment from the sheriff, they're gonna do the best they can to get us what we need to get there, on their end, too. So, with that, I'll take any questions on that, but I think we're in good shape moving forward. Still a lot, a lot more questions and answers right now. Still a lot, a lot more questions than answers right now, but we are getting there, and I think we're in a good place.
I know we'll be, Madam Chair. I know we'll be keeping specific law enforcement officers on staff to do the arrests for additional crimes and things like that. As for keeping the major people that oversee the jail, what are your thoughts on that? Such as Major Jenkins and the other heads.
Well, the plan right now is what we've talked to the sheriff is that there'll be a transition period between his leadership and the civilians that we will hire to run the jail, jail administrator and the deputies. I think what we've drafted is transition not to exceed 12 months, which gives us time to hire some civilians into those positions. But the intent is everybody else, you know, on the 30th of September or, and I'll tell you right now, the transition will happen on the first day of a pay period because that's the easiest time for the transition to happen. So whatever pay period makes sense around there, one day there'll be sheriff officer employees, the next day there're going to be county employees. Now, the major you mentioned, the two captains, that's going to be part of the transition agreement where, you know, I think we've discussed, and again, we've got to work with the sheriff on this, and we not have real detailed conversation, a transition period where they're in there for a certain period of time while we go out, do a national search, and hire into those positions. And that's why I've seen, so that we have a civilian jail administrator that the board confirms is a director and reports through me to the board.
So the major and two Jenkins, and major and two captains will only stay with us for one additional year?
The transition period is, will, is, I need them in there long enough to hire civilians into the positions. And so that is ultimately the jail administrator, if the jail is going to work for the board through me, the jail administrator needs to work for me, and needs to be a civilian that works for me. And so I need a transition period. Now, there're going to be civilian posted positions that anybody that's qualified can apply for.
Well, I know specific other departments, we still have law enforcement officers, sworn law enforcement officers that stay in those positions such as the bailiffs and things like that, so I wouldn't.
The bailiffs don't work for us. Those are just contracts that show up. So you mean the ones here?
And they're through the, in the court systems, through the courthouse.
That's his operation. That's not your operation.
It's still law enforcement?
But it's not your employee. They're not.
Correct. They're still law enforcement. So my point being is we still have law enforcement that come in to do other jobs and considering keeping specific law enforcement officers in the jail to continue with other jobs.
So there, there is still some things to work out in the jail where there are individuals that will need arrest power. We have not worked that out yet, but that is not the jail administrator and the two deputies.
And I feel that we should be finding out firsthand instead of the public coming to us, letting us know additional items. I should hear from you first, so I am concerned with that.
I will like to suggest that you guys have a meeting.
Thank you.
And discuss, and I'm sure you will, with all of us, jail transition.
There's a lot of work to do.
Exactly.
I mean, and it changes and is evolving over time, so there will be briefings and there will be updates as we go forward with this.
Yes, we need to have a meeting.
I already did.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. You.
Me?
Jeff.
Oh, you.
No, I don't, I don't have anything I need to tell you right now.
Okay.
Okay, great. On the jail transition, the meetings that you're having, if you have any other future ones involving finance, payroll, operations that would impact the court, let's see.
The court or the clerk?
Well, through the, I'm saying court because the team over there would know if it impacts, like transmitting data to the clerical system. So if it's court-related, we're going to arrest that area. I would need to have one of my team members in those meetings just to make sure. And also information technology. So anytime those meetings happen, I know that we were invited, I think, two weeks ago to a finance and an IT meeting that went well, and just want to include us on any future meetings. The list of items to go through and audit, the transition audit to submit to the external auditors was finalized today. We're going to get it over and email it to Eric Breitenbach and Dan Biles for them to look at and review and see if there's anything else to add into it, and then send it out to the auditing firms for a quote and also to the sheriff's office. So I just want to give an update on that. Two other items, some great things going on. Operation Stand Down took place this past weekend, and as part of that, on Friday, we have Veterans Court. It's partnership with my office, the court, state attorney and public defender to help veterans get back on their feet. And there were a total of 10 veterans with 22 cases that we processed that day. There was a total of over $14,000 that was waived, and 12 driver's licenses were cleared to be reinstated. So it was a great, a great, great day and a great effort on Operation Stand Down. Another thing I wanted to mention, we had our Student Inspired Art Walk on Wednesday and Thursday of last week. Wednesday, New Port Ritchie, Thursday, Dade City. It was a great turnout. The Student Inspired Art Walk is a partnership with my office and the school board, and if you've ever been on the other side of the counter, other than the side that I'm on, it is a very, very stressful situation, a very stressful time of your life, and the walls are very institutional-looking, just plain white walls. So to bring some inspiration in there, some hope and happiness, we partnered with the school board, and their art teachers throughout the schools from kindergarten through 12th grade submit student artwork that we display on our walls, and it makes it such a beautiful place to be at. We had 136 student artists participate in the art walk, and also there was 24 schools from kindergarten through 12th grade that participated. The receptions were wonderful. We had a lot of dignitaries there, Representative Ed Hooper, Representative Randy Maggard, our public defender Sarah Molo, our school board Megan Harding, Colleen Bowdwin, Allison Crumley, and school superintendent Kurt Browning and deputy school superintendent Ray Gad. So it was a great turnout, and just wanted to say if you're in the courthouse, you're looking at the artwork, you know, take a moment, see who wrote, see who created the artwork, and then you can also write notes back to the students that we will take for you. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I just respond?
Yeah.
Clerk, real quick. I do want to come into clerk's office, and I'm not going to get into details. It was nothing bad, it was something good. But I did, I was at our office yesterday afternoon here in Dade City, and your staff was awesome. So, again, it wasn't, it's not a negative thing. Well, I wasn't at the courthouse.
No.
Yeah, we, yeah, we saw some pictures too. Yes, I saw. But we were, yeah, we were just getting some document, documentation and things like that done and taking care of it.
All good things.
All good stuff. But, yeah, you guys, your staff was awesome. Just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
And I know they were shorthanded for unfortunate reasons, I was told.
Yes, absolutely.
So they were very pleasant, and everybody was very satisfied. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's me. I first want to talk about Osteen Road, so there's a map that I need to have you put up that was sent, and I'm not sure what we should go to first. The Google Earth, or, so, so to orient you, this is Massachusetts below, and then you have a little road coming up on the right and Rowan, or Congress, or Rowan coming up on the left. This has bothered me for a long time, especially when we had AM Skills at Marchmont. You have three schools here. I don't know if you can use a pointer if someone can. You've got Marchmont over here on the left, you have Wendell Crin, and you have an elementary school in a school complex there. And so, do you know where Marchmont is? I don't know if you, so, Marchmont, yep. Then you have, I don't know, what's the name of that elementary school?
Calusa Elementary.
Calusa.
More than Ridwood High School.
And then, well, Wendell, Ridwood High School is now called Wendell Crin. And now we have Pepin Academy over here to the right. It used to be Genesis Prep, right there. But we have a spike, we have a, we have a road that's not connected. So, and you can see where, right now, that purple takes you all the way through the neighborhood, all these homes front on that road, and you go down to get to Pepin. And then, and then you have Massachusetts down here, and if we could pull up the Google Earth, I want you to zoom in on Massachusetts. And some of you have been here for a while, you, but no one else here. When, when John Gallagher and, who was the CFO, what's his name? Mike Nuremeyer. When Mike Nuremeyer and Missy owned Genesis Prep, they wanted to try and connect these, but because of Mike's position in the county, he didn't feel that he could really push it, that it seemed very self-serving. I, as you guys know through history, I'm not a fan of spike strips or whatever you want to call it. So if you could pull up Google Earth, I told Pepin that I would work on this because especially now that they don't have the buses that they used to have for parents, for kids to come to their school, their parents have to drive them, and many from great distances, to get to their school. So, let's see, you're going to go north, okay, and...
And their parents park.
Okay. So if you could make that go down a little bit, that's good, but go, go down a little bit, and down just a little bit more. So that's Pepin, the campus is up there on the north, and you see Osteen going right in front of it, but then it stops, and then it picks up again right down here. None of these houses to the south on Osteen front Osteen, okay? There's no driveways touching on Osteen. So I really want the county to look at connecting these two roads, and we do have some right-of-way there. I, you know, we're talking about affecting 10 houses maybe that are between Autumn Lane and the campus where the other route you're affecting, we counted 131 homes between Osteen and Orchid Lake. So it's really not fair in my mind to all those people that are on Orchid Lake that all the traffic has to come in front of them because we don't have this connection here. For safety reasons, they've had to have an ambulance come, and they actually came up this southern way, and they couldn't get in, had to turn around. So, you know, they, they would really like to see if we could, see if there's any possibility of connecting these roads. So that's, that's number one.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
I agree with that connection.
Yeah.
And while you're looking at that, and you get the map just where it is, take a look at the road right below where it says Marshant. Consider that road going over the little road.
Where's that? Where's Marshant?
Marshant, right with that arrow.
Oh, there, Mark?
Think about that. If that goes right over, that goes right to the government center.
Really?
And that's wetlands.
Think about the trips you save there.
It's all wet.
So Commissioner Starkey, I agree.
Maybe Autumn Lane.
I'm going to mention, and I'm going to stand up for the citizens that were there that fought against this many years ago, and in addition, Ms. Osteen that used to live there. If they want to connect and have an additional entrance to their school going down Osteen, connecting to Marshant, and having a gate there and a gate on Osteen, but I disagree with, and I do not agree with the connection on Osteen. Those citizens have lived there for over 30, 40 years, and they do not want the connection in that neighborhood.
Well, sorry, sorry, but they're making everybody in the whole world drive all the way around when they don't even have driveways fronting on that road to get to those schools.
This is my district and my citizens.
Okay, well, we can, you know, we can see what happens, but I totally disagree with that.
And this, Pepin's students, parents have been parking up and down and creating additional traffic up and down those roads, and they're not staying in the line. They're parking up and down every side road. There's 10 to 15 cars parked up and down those side roads.
Well, this will save a lot of people from having to go up and over and down through the neighborhood to get to those.
And when Genesis was there, we did not have these concerns. We did not have the traffic.
Wait, Madam Chair, can we, just, can you bring, maybe bring it back, have an agenda item brought back so we can debate? I don't think we can, we don't want to debate this now. Let's bring it back to the agenda item.
Right. I was ready to move on, but the administrator wants to say so.
Let's bring it back for an agenda item.
In order to do that, we need a cost estimate to make the connection, because remember, your transportation program is fiscally constrained, which means in order to do that, you're going to have to not do something else.
Well, I just want to get it started and in motion. I brought it up many times, and I know it takes many steps, but there are a few of these around the county that I think we need to fix, and while I'm still sitting here, I want to get that ball rolling in some way.
The chair gave direction, the direction of the board, and then work on it, bring it back.
All right. The firefighters left, but I want to say there is, you know, they're talking about the delays in building, but there is truly a shortage of materials. People are telling me they're moving into a house with borrowed, new, new construction with borrowed stoves and refrigerators and appliances, and they move them in, and you get them temporary, and when your stuff comes in, they take them out and move it to the next house. I mean, I don't know how these apartments are even getting ovens or anything. I just, right? You're hearing the same thing?
I don't know. We just moved into a place and didn't have any issue getting any appliance.
Oh, well, I'm hearing this.
Maybe we're lucky.
My, one of my neighbors in Aristida's building a house in Gulf Harbors, they had a storm come, knocked their tresses down seven months to wait for new tresses, busted their tresses.
Home Depot had to loan a refrigerator for three months for a new refrigerator to come in, so.
Yeah, so, I wanted to tell you that AM Skills, you know, our renovation is underway, and it's going a lot slower than I would have hoped, but we're moving along. But we have a boot camp going on right now at Lighthouse for the Blind. We had 17, I think 16 or 17, which is, normally we have 10, nine or 10. So we're real excited, but something, something about this one is, that's unusual, is we have our first deaf applicant and our first autistic applicant going through our boot camp, so we're excited about that. And then lastly, well, I did attend the ULI meeting in San Diego, and I'll bring some of my stuff to the next meeting. I attended three sessions where you go out to the community, and one was on affordable housing and some very interesting stuff. And I will be speaking at the REACH conference Friday with commissioner from the other counties on a panel about affordable housing, and thank your staff for helping me get some notes together for that. And lastly, I'm pleased to say that Governor Ron DeSantis's office called me a couple days ago, and I've been appointed to the State Apprenticeship Advisory Council.
Good, congratulations.
So very excited to, to do that. Actually, there's quite a few from the Tampa Bay area. Steve Kona, if any of you know him?
Yep.
Yep, Steve got appointed and a few others. So it's our purpose, the purpose of our SAC is to provide input to the Florida Department of Education on matters relating to the registered apprenticeship program, and it's a four-year term, so I will figure out where I'm going to find that time. Okay, I think we're done.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Pasco County waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals.